Thank you, I'd like to call the uh... Could everyone please take a seat and we can come to order and then we can get started on what's gonna be kind of a fun evening, I think with recognitions. Thank you. Like to call the meeting of the Board of Directors of Tacoma Public Schools for Thursday, June 23rd, 2016 to order. Would you please write for the flag salute led by Board Member Cobb?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Director Hines.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
I understand Director Ashka's making it through traffic and will be joining us.
Oh yeah, she was stuck in the five curve the last we heard, so she's on her way.
Director Viall.
Here. The Chair would move to move Item 8 up in the agenda to precede the budget presentation. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move Item 8 up to precede Item Number 5. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, alright, now, motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we will move to recognition of staff, students, and the community. Mr. Vopel, I believe this is your night.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, President Viall and members of the Board. I wish Superintendent Santorno could be here tonight because she's a big believer in helping young students develop a passion for reading, and that's our first recognition tonight. We have twenty children ranging in ages from three to five who have successfully completed this year's Ready, Set, Read program by reading all fifty books in the program's book series. The program is an engaging preschool literacy and kindergarten readiness program, and it helps these young children and their families prepare for that transition into the school setting. Communities and Schools of Tacoma has partnered with Tacoma Public Schools on this program for the past four years. And it's my pleasure to introduce you, to you, to tell you more and introduce the children, Linda Thompson Black from Communities and Schools. Linda?
Good evening. My name is Linda Thompson Black, and I'm leading the CIS Growth and Expansion Initiative in South Tacoma, the hashtag #253impactzone. On behalf of the Communities and Schools Board of Directors and our CIS Tacoma affiliate, I would like to thank Superintendent Santorno, Assistant Superintendent Josh Garcia, Board Chair Scott Hines, and Amanda Scott Thomas. The School Board for your... And I'd like to thank you for your tremendous leadership and for creating a school district culture that supports and encourages partnerships like CIS. Our mission is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life by placing CIS success coordinators in each school and developing a plan for student success, working with the school site team and community partners. CIS is a cradle to career program. We are currently in Mount Tahoma, Oakland, Baker, Fernhill, and Sherman. This year, ninety-eight percent of CIS students met their academic goals, ninety-five percent of our seniors graduated, ninety-eight percent of students participating, and our Costco-sponsored Sound Reading Program met their DRA goals. We have a great deal to celebrate. This evening, we are here to acknowledge the wonderful success of our adorable Ready, Set, Read program preschool students. I would like to introduce Terry Hartson-Daly, the Ready, Set, Read Coordinator, to share a little bit more.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Terry Hartson-Daly, and I am the Outreach Coordinator for Ready, Set, Read, part of the Communities and Schools program that we have here. Ready, Set, Read is an engaging preschool literacy program that we have here, and it also works with the kindergarten, getting them ready to go into the school system so that they get familiar with the schools and become more familiar and comfortable in that environment. We provide access to a group of seventy-five books for these children and families to check out so that they can start engaging with the process at home of being read to. So what this does is they start learning to understand that the printed word has meaning, that they learn to identify ten to fifteen different letters, and that they learn to be able to tell a story and recreate a story on their own as it's being told to them. At the end of this presentation, Communities and Schools has a learning tablet that we're also going to be presenting for... I believe Karen is going to be doing the drawing for us. And one little lucky student will be able to go home with that, so it's kind of a fun thing that we like to give away. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to share this really big celebration that we have for us. We think this is very exciting, and at this time, I would like to be able to start introducing some of these students that we have. So...
Before you do that, we want to thank you. I'd like to personally thank you, I think on behalf of the Board, for everything that CIS has done for so many years for our kids and our community. It's a valuable partner for us.
It's wonderful. I absolutely love being here. I couldn't even think of being anywhere else in the world. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. So, first, Ariana. If you would like to come up here?
Who are we gonna put them here?
Next, Elijah.
She wanted, did you want to?
Vinny? Isaiah, was Isaiah full of mickens? Isla? Latasha? Mati?
Come on, Quan Chen. Come on, Nani. Go see Dr. Garcia. Get a boy.
Riley? Is Riley here? Roman? Sidney? Valeria?
Sure, exactly.
No. Riley Sullivan. You won much a special prize.
Can we all look right at the camera here, and then on the count of three, we'll say "read" as loud as we can, okay? One, two, three. Read!
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vopel.
Thank you. The Lincoln High School Boys Track and Field Team won the state championship this spring by taking first place in the final race of the day, the 4x400 relay. They also read fifty books. No, I'm just kidding.
We hope they did.
The win is the school's tenth state track and field title, but the first since 1977. This particular team achieved a number of other impressive accomplishments along the way, winning the Tacoma Invitational Narrows League and the West Central District three championships. To tell you more and introduce our honorees, I'm pleased to introduce to you from our District Athletic Director, Mr. Sam Reed.
Good evening, Board. It's tough to compete with the little ones before us, so hopefully these guys can do a little bit, do a little bit to make you proud. As you know, the city of Tacoma and Tacoma Schools is a rich track and field tradition, as Mr. Vopel shared a little bit. For the last number of years, we've been the host again of the State Track and Field Tournament at Mount Tahoma Stadium this time. That's one of my duties, is to put on that for the three hundred or so schools and the over eighteen hundred athletes that participate in that every year. I can tell you firsthand, it's a lot more fun when we have our kids up there taking home some trophies as well. So, this year was a special year for this group, and some great individuals representing Lincoln High School in a number of athletic teams and programs, not just track. But it was a race down to the wire, literally and figuratively, and a very proud head coach to tell you a little bit, and to introduce the players. Introduce Coach Dwayne Lee here to introduce his coaches and the team. So, Coach, you want to come up here?
Good evening. First of all, we'd like to thank the Tacoma Public Schools and the School Board for recognizing our achievement this season. Like Sam was saying, it's been a very special year for this group. We came into the season with some pretty high expectations, and our kind of mantra was, "It's not about the destination, it's about the journey," and we had a wonderful journey all season long. I'll take a moment just to introduce some of our athletes that are here tonight. Marcus Williams is a hurdler for us. James Mawara is a long-distance runner for us. This is a coach, our hurdle coach Rodney Stokes, our throws coach Stacy Smith, another sprint coach LaShray Jones, high jumper and triple jumper Tamiko Williams, Alvin Johnson, a member of the 4x4, and also a jumper, Darian Williams, a member of the 4x100 relay and a triple jumper, and Terrell Bromer, a member of the 4x400 and triple jumper as well. And like Sam said, it came down, it was a very dramatic, very exciting weekend. Yes, we learned a lot about running with our teammates during that event. So, but thankfully, it all worked itself out in the end, and we were able to come away as state champions. So we're very proud, thank you very much. And if I could just say, I'd just like to add one thing. Our coaching staff is very unique in the fact that we have ten coaches that coach. Six of them are on a stipend, four of them come as volunteers. Of the ten, nine of them are Lincoln alumni. So we're very proud, very proud school. Thank you.
Well, just on behalf of the Board and the school district, we're very proud of you. Lincoln has really done us proud in the last two, well, in the last decades, and we really are proud of you.
Great, thank you very much.
And I am the child of two Lincoln alums, one whose dad was the City Decathlon Champion for Lincoln.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job. Good job.
Congratulations on the Aces.
Good job. Thanks for giving your time.
Congratulations.
Thank you for giving your time. Congratulations. Got a little trophy, congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was a big deer, I won that. My dad won twice. Then he won a pack eight. Alright, Mr. Vopel.
Thank you, I don't know why part of me wants to say, "Last one to the parking lot's a rotten egg."
Please don't.
Our next recognition, you know, the National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. And scholarship winners are chosen based on their abilities, skills, extracurricular accomplishments, and potential for success in college and beyond. Foss IB World School was honored this year to have the district's only two National Merit Scholar winners. To tell you about them is Dr. Dan Erickson, the IB Coordinator, and Foss High School Principal Lissandra Ness, who will introduce the winners and maybe one of them by Skype.
Hi, thank you. This program, the National Merit Program, is incredible, and it's a great opportunity for our students. And I would have to say that a lot of the credit obviously goes to their parents, but I also would like to say that through the guidance and the advice of our IB Coordinator and the teachers and the preparation that has taken place, we are honored to be able to have two extraordinary students to be able to receive this honor. And the person who can best speak to the, just the incredible attributes of these two students is Dr. Dan Erickson, who has worked very closely with these two students.
No. I cannot do these two students' justice. I simply can't. I'll introduce them first and then say a few words, I suppose. Here in the audience, we have Beatrice Wilson. Come up here, Bee. And by Skype, if he's still there, is Henry Wah, who is visiting us this morning, nine AM in Taiwan, in order to be recognized by the School Board. Henry is best known for wearing a yellow jacket. He is out of uniform, is it there, Henry? Can you put it on for us?
I actually didn't bring it to Taiwan, it's too hot here.
Too hot, right. I've known Henry for three years, and he's an exemplary young man. He's been in the IB program at Foss, the diploma program, and I've watched him grow and mature as an adult in only the way I think the IB program can, which I'll speak to a bit more in a moment. Bee, I've known for four years. I had her as a freshman in Russian class, and I've watched her also mature and develop into this wonderful, well-rounded person. They're both extraordinary human beings. They did the full IB diploma program, which consists of seven exams and an extended research essay and a community service component. Seven exams. And I've always considered myself sort of an academic, but I cannot imagine sitting for seven exams. Seven exams, seven... Seven exams. I think those seven exams are worth saying something about, though, because those seven exams get you into nearly any university that you apply for. And I'm hoping that... Gee, those preschool kids left. Anybody that reads fifty books in a year, I hope they come to Foss for the IB program. Bee, would you like to say a word?
About what?
Nothing, nothing at all.
About how significant it is that you are a National Merit Scholar, and you get your picture up on that big wall at Foss, I assume.
Definitely. Yeah, that was definitely the selling point.
Unfortunately, mine chose to play sports instead, so...
Well, the National Merit Award has, was a great honor, obviously, and it's going to help me a lot with college. I'm attending the University of Oklahoma in the fall on a full tuition scholarship. So, I'll be studying Russian and hopefully public health so that I can work for the CDC someday, someday, as a disease specialist. But the National Merit thing has not been as big of a part of my life, my high school life anyway, as IB. I started taking IB classes as a sophomore, and throughout these past three years, it's just been an incredible community for me, not just academically, but the kids who do IB are some of the most caring, creative, intelligent, and kind people that I have had the fortune to know. And I'm so grateful that I've gotten to spend this time working with them and sometimes competing against them for, to get to the IB band. And I'm really grateful to Foss for affording me the opportunity to complete this world-class program. And so, and to Dr. Dan for mentoring me throughout the past four years. It's meant a lot.
And I know you all want to hear from Mr. Yellow Jacket. He managed to also play tennis and baseball while undergoing this ordeal we call the IB Diploma Program. Henry?
I don't have much to say, but I guess I will say that I'm very grateful for, you know, all the help I got in high school, whether it be from my teachers or from my parents, from my friends, you know. I couldn't have achieved what I achieved without them. And I also like to say that Foss is a great school, so if there's anyone there who is about to go to high school and is in the process of choosing a high school, I would definitely recommend Foss.
Thank you, Henry. I like to tell the community when I'm out talking about the IB program that it's the best-kept secret in Tacoma. I really think it is, but I think we have some of the best kids. I've just, I've been at Foss for twenty years now, and I'm so impressed with the kids in the IB Diploma Program. And we do have our share of National Merit finalists every year or two. And I'd like to present them again to you, the Board, Beatrice Wilson and Henry Wah.
We'd like to have you come up, please. And again, congratulations, what an amazing honor for our school to shoot down for you. Henry, we'll shake your hand and we'll give you this pen across international lines. Henry, congratulations to you also.
Thank you, thank you. Beatrice? How's it going?
Alright, Mr. Vopel.
Yes, thank you, President Viall and members of the Board. Johnny Devine, a physics teacher at the Science and Math Institute, was named this spring as the Air Force Association's Teacher of the Year. Johnny won the award at both the regional and state level, and will be considered for the national award. Johnny was a member of the team that participated in the creation of Sammy and has taught at the school since its beginning. A National Board-certified teacher, he has also advised the school's associated student body. And here to introduce, or to actually present the awards to Johnny is Tom Hanson, the Vice President for Aerospace Education for the McCord Chapter of the Air Force Association. Tom?
For those people that aren't aware of the Air Force Association, it's a civilian association formed to help educate the public about the need for strong and well-trained air force. We also run programs that support our airmen around the world as we go along. But one of the other programs that we do every year is we go out and search nationwide for teachers that are doing an outstanding job in teaching and motivating in the areas of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And this year, we're very proud to announce John Devine is the winner of both the McCord Field Chapter Award. He gets a certificate and a check for $250 to use during his classes, or for himself if he wants. He also then competed with two other AFA chapters in the state, Spokane and Seattle, and he won the state award as well. So, I'm here to present that state award to him, certificate and another $500 check that he gave.
I don't have much to say, but we often wonder what makes good teachers, and it's clearly getting awards that they can brag about on Facebook, and award money doesn't hurt either. But seriously, I think that good teachers are made not by their ability to wax poetic at a podium, but things that they do on a daily basis in the classroom. So let me just say thank you to the district and your leadership, and a bigger thank you to my administration for their daily trust that they put in me and my ways that I teach that allows me to do something of distinction. So thank you again.
Tom, would you come up, please? Is this one Amanda's?
Yes.
Amanda, Scott Thomas, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Chairman Viall. It is my pleasure to do this every month. This is our last one over, we'll be taking a little bit of a hiatus over the summer and resuming in the fall. But this is, again, the Gold Star Community Partnership Award, and we know that Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. So when it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that we can't do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for Tacoma Public School students, families and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award was designed to signify honor and thanks to a community partner who has made the difference by doing what is best for kids. For your consideration today, we have another AVE. This must be the Night of the Ave. Jamad Canley grew up in Tacoma, Washington, and is a graduate of Lincoln High School. He received his Bachelor's of Arts in Marketing from Washington State University. While at Washington State University, Jamad was the co-founder of Black Men Making a Difference and also worked with the Future Teachers of Color and PACE, preparing aspiring COO's of color for educational excellence. Those were the programs that he engaged in. And through these organizations, along with a program he founded called Operation Raising Minds, Jamad began to travel to high schools in the area and speak with students about their future and the importance of attending college. Today, Jamad Canley is an internationally-known, top-level cultural transformation consultant. He specializes in peak performance, and he's also a masterful storyteller. Jamad focuses on helping people and organizations accomplish their goals and fulfill their potential in their personal, professional, and organizational lives. His endless dedication to empowerment, performance, and education for all people has allowed him the privilege to work with peak organizations such as Microsoft, Western Union, and of course Tacoma Public Schools. Jamad has been featured as a presenter for TPS's Principal's Summer Institute. He's worked with staff and several student groups, and even shared his expertise with parents and community at several of our superintendent's advisory breakfasts this year, as well as the Family and Community Learning Academy this year back in the spring. If that's not enough, this year, Jamad reached out to Lister Principal Kate Fraser to start an after-school program for boys called the Gentleman by Choice Mentorship Program, known as Tacoma Gents. Young men in third through the sixth grade are supported by adult mentors and guided in the disciplines of self-image, self-esteem, self-discipline, self-respect, and self-actualization. These young students receive training in leadership, dress and appearance, respect, etiquette, finance, communication, and of course, academic support. In this club, membership is not given, but it's earned. In this club, membership is not given, but it's earned and participants serve as elementary school ambassadors by engaging in community service and participating in school beautification activities. Mentees are not only encouraged, but they're also required to adhere to high standards of gentlemanlike qualities in and out of school. It is a fabulous program. I had the chance to participate in their end-of-the-year event and I was greeted at the door by a young third grader in a tuxedo. That was impressive. I'm gonna ask Jamad to come on up to receive this award. The Community Partnership Office recommends that the Board of Directors recognize Jamad Canley as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner for the month of June. Can we give him a hand clap, please?
First, I'm not sure where you got that bio from, but I definitely, you know, during the summertime, need to bring you on the road with me to introduce me places. But I, I'd just like to say thank you to Tacoma Public Schools and to the board for all that you do. Thank you for taking the time to say thank you to members like myself in the community who are doing things. But I also want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of you who make such a huge difference in this place every day. Getting to travel around and do a lot of consulting with the education groups and school districts is so amazing to see what Tacoma is doing and how exciting it is to see all the great work that's happening in Tacoma. So, I thank you for that. I also would be wrong and would definitely regret if I didn't take the opportunity to thank my wife and daughters who are back there. My youngest daughter, Jana, just turned one yesterday. So, this has been my week off. There she is. My oldest daughter, Samaia, who is five, who goes to Geiger, so I'm also a Tacoma parent. And my mom, who works at Geodrome, who's also, so we're a whole Tacoma Public Schools family. That's just what we do here. And my wife, Atiya, who supports everything that we do and has been a huge support for the Tacoma Gents Program. So, I just want to say thank you to everyone and that's all.
Jamad, thank you for your contributions that go above and beyond. I know what you do for your business work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Come on up. All right, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, if you would, please.
President Viall, members of the board. The Washington School Public Relations Association recently announced their winners of its 2016 awards programming honoring the best communications work among the 295 school districts across the state. Tacoma Public Schools became the first school district in the organization's history to win top honors in seven of the 13 awards categories. Staff members from our public information team took best category honors in the following categories: calendar, marketing and branding materials, writing, photography, video production, social media, electronic newsletter. You should also know that Spotlight, our district's twice-a-yearly printed newsletter, coordinated by our own executive director and emcee, Mr. Dan Vopel, and sometimes guest comedian, got the second highest score in its category. Top three entries in the writing category were all stories written by our own brand journalist, Chelsea Chelsea. The top three photography entries and two top video production entries were created by our video storyteller, Mr. Casey Madison. L. Warmuth coordinated the top social media campaign around our graduate rate increase event. And the only entry in the entire competition to win a perfect score was the Tacoma Kids Have It marketing campaign put together by our public information coordinator, Catherine McCarthy. We also learned this week that the Tacoma Kids Have It Campaign also won a Golden Achievement Award at the National School Public Relations Association. And although Chelsea and Casey are out of town, we do have Ms. L. Warmuth, Ms. Catherine McCarthy and Mr. Dan Vopel here that we would like to recognize. We know that our district's positive reputation is due to the hard work going in on our schools and in our community. But to have people that can tell that magical story about the academic, social and emotional well-being of our students is truly priceless. And it's due to these folks. And so, without hesitation, I'd like to thank them on behalf of you and recognize them for their outstanding services that have been recognized by both state and national officials. Dan, would you like to say anything? This is the first time Dan's been speechless, so I'd like to recognize that as well.
Well, they're sitting down about, two years ago, this board asked the PIO office to up our, our PR and get our, our message out. And I think this is indicative that we're doing a very good job of getting our message out. And once again, thank you to all of you from us up here, because I know that you're always there when we need you and it's always high-quality and very informative. All right, we're going to revert back to the original agenda. Item five, 2016-2017 budget presentation by Kristen Bell, Budget Director.
All right. Good evening, President Viall and members of the board. Tonight is the official budget hearing for the 2016-17 budget. And the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an opportunity for the board and the community to review and comment on the proposed 2016-17 annual budget. Additionally, I'd like to note that upon board approval, we'd like to recommend that the budget be formally adopted during the July 14th board meeting. I have a relatively short presentation and then that I'd like to provide you and then we'll have some time for you to comment and ask questions and then we'll provide some time for the community to come up and, and have comments.
Is this not going to cooperate for you?
Has to be on, apparently.
Oh, that's what that little button says.
So, to get us started, just want to go over the intent, excuse me. The first slide is a slide on district-wide enrollment and you may have recognized this, you have seen this slide before. Since the enrollment data is the most important factor for developing the budget, we felt it necessary to include it again in order to provide continuity with budget message. As you can see, our projected headcount for next year is 28,182 students, which is actually a decrease of 123 students from October of 2015. The majority of those are actually at the middle school level. It's a net of 123, but we're seeing a decrease at the middle school level. Please note that these numbers are exclusive of the Open Doors and Running Start programs that are offered by the district. Included in the Open Doors programs are the students who attend the Willie Stewart Academy, program at Goodwill and TCC's Fresh Start Program. In the 2015-16 year, we averaged 380 students in all of our Open Doors programs combined, which is incidentally a decrease of almost 60 students from last year. Our Running Start programs averaged about 296 students this year, which is a decrease of 207 students from last year. And there's some suspect that's due to our offerings of more AP classes, IB and college and high school. This slide reflects legislative impacts to the district. And again, you have seen this about a month and a half ago, I guess. The I-732 cost of living adjustment of $2,065,000 represents a 1.8% increase for the COLA. MSOC is an increase of about $13.31 per student. And then there's an additional increase for the ninth through 12th grade students of $1.83. Again, we have an intro, the class size reduction in high poverty, the class sizes were again reduced at the state level, so they're paying more for those smaller classes. And then the remaining four buildings that we have, that were unfunded for full-day kindergarten in past years are now, so 100% of our schools will be funded for full-day kindergarten. Just to note, the I-732 cost of living adjustment for revenues, $2,065,000 and the cost associated with that is $2.5 million. That's that discrepancy for the full funding. This next slide talks about the key local impacts that we are experiencing in this budget are represented here. There's about four and a half million of the salary impacts for COLA and negotiations. Again, that's a 1.8% COLA and then a 1.6% locally negotiated increase. The one and a half million dollars for innovation represents our new IDEA school, an investment in the Health and Nutrition Program at Jason Lee, as well as increased support for IB programs across the district. The $1 million in technology impact represents a transfer of positions from Capital Projects Fund into the General Fund. And these positions are no longer appropriate to be charged to the Capital Fund due to the status of the project. The light item for miscellaneous positions represents some additional, an Assistant Director of Security, Assistant Director of Secondary Ed and a Director of Equity, AVID, NAP. Wainwright openings of $1 million include just the startups cost for a school, so custodial, office staff, building allocation that we've never had before and an assistant principal. Under the other adjustments column of 700,000, there's kind of a potpourri of different things that are included in that. There's an investment into leadership development, investment into teacher recruitment and retention, district-wide initiatives, some Whittier-Wainwright IB in addition to the innovation on the upper line there, and a few other items of smaller amounts. We have 800,000 for the assessment program of I-ready and that includes the program itself and the training associated with it. And then the school-based staff adjustments of 2 million are a result of a recalibration of the administrative model this year and some additional teaching supports and adjustments at the building. This slide is rather busy and I apologize. So, I'll do my best to try and keep it simple. So, as, I'm going to ask you to look at the top right quadrant of the slide in the savings per year budget to actual. The district has experienced significant, as well as a relatively consistent, budget savings annually. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just noticing on the screen it didn't come out. That BBP slide should be on the 1415 section of 16.87. Don't know what happened there. Is that that way on yours?
It's on 1415 on ours.
Oh, good. There's just something with that.
Yeah, something, it's, it's correct on ours.
Okay. The current year, 2015-16 year is projected to experience about a $10.85 million in budget savings. These savings represent expenditures the district intended to spend but didn't. We can attribute these savings to position vacancies throughout the year, which are especially prevalent for hard-to-fill positions, as well as evidence that the district is operating smarter and leaner. You will notice that the district experienced a significant increase in savings the first year that the budgeting by priorities was implemented. The budgeting by priorities process promotes a more proactive and intentional approach to spending. And again, that BBP should be over on the 1415 year. If you drop down to the lower right quadrant of the slide under fund balance by year, you can see that the projected ending fund balance for the current year is 42.57 million. This is equivalent of 11.13% of district revenues. Incidentally, the 2015-16 adopted budget was projected to be at 7.49%, which is only 28.8 million. When building this budget, we had three main target objectives. One, adhere to the board policy 6015 and 6015.1R regulation, which requires the district to maintain a 5% of revenue minimum balance for emergencies. Second, to maintain adequate reserves for future deficiencies, i.e. the lack of McCleary compliance and potential levy cliff. Thirdly, to increase resources for our current students. The proposal that we have is to use the carryover savings from the 1516 budget to build budget authority in the 1617 year. The budget includes a $33.2 million reserve at the end of the 1617 year, which is an 8.36% percentage of revenue. So, of those slides that I just previously spoke of, here are the summary of those. So, we have, the top line is carryover savings for the $6 million from the 1516 budget, plus the $6,500,000 for the net legislative impacts and then a $12 million additional cost to balance this down to zero. These numbers represent what will be on the official documentation and resolution on July 14th for adoption. The revenues for the General Fund budget are recommended at $397,218,282, which is an increase of about 12 and a half million dollars from this year's current budget. From an expenditure standpoint, we anticipate our expenditures to be $406,537,436, which is an increase of 15.6 over the current year's budgeted expenditures, resulting in a change in fund balance of $9,309,154. Of these dollars, $6 million are the carryover savings that we just mentioned on the slide prior. $2.32 million includes various carryover allocations throughout the district for programs and buildings. And thirdly, there's a million dollars set aside specifically for curriculum and instruction. Now, we're going, these are the other funds of the district. We are budgeting our debt service fund expenditures to be at $47,984,412. These expenditures will be used to manage the bond-related debt obligations and the district currently has $564,120,000 in outstanding bonds. The ASB budget is projected to have expenditures of $4,54,636. This is an increase of expenditure capacity of approximately 173,000 from the current year. The revenue and expenditures for both ASB clubs and classes are expected to operate at higher levels next year. And incidentally, the General Fund has set aside $250,000 for possible transportation budget supplemental sporting events. However, an analysis needs to be done prior to allocate any of these dollars. The Transportation Vehicle Fund is budgeting $1.3 million for expenditure and there's a plan to purchase nine additional buses next year, which is a little less, we purchased 13 this year and the year prior. Our capital projects expenditures are budgeted at $126,119,000. And as you can see here, we have the current major projects for the 1617 year. As far as the budget watch list for next year, as we move forward, we need to keep an eye on whether or not the compliance with McCleary happens, whether salaries will be fully compensated by the state and consequently eliminating our over-reliance on our local levy. The Education Funding Task Force has been tasked with determining how the legislative, legislature must meet its obligation to provide adequate compensation and address the levy cliff. They must make a recommendation to the legislature by January 9th of 2017. In the meantime, we can count on our levy collection in the 1617 year to remain steady at $86 million. And then for the 1718 year, however, we potentially stand to lose about 5.2 million in tax revenue. Additionally, there are pension increases for 17, the 1719 biennium, 1617, it's 0.18% and the 1718 year, they're going up as high as 1.74%. This slide just reiterates the fact that we are aligning ourselves with the legislative cycle as far as the budgeting by priorities process. And so, we are at the second year of the biennium and this was really a review year for the district. So, last year, when the programs and departments wrote their budgeting by priorities proposal, they were asked to include two years' worth of plans. And so, this year, we took that second year of plans and then we just made some adjustments here and there. Starting in October, we're going to start- Uh, starting in October, we're gonna start the process again for the 1719 biennium with a full budgeting by priorities process. Again, this is the life cycle of the budgeting priorities annual process. And again, if you go down, uh, to identify results in the bottom right-hand corner, that is really where we'll start, probably in, uh, November, and talking about those. And then we'll work with the program and department managers and proposal writers to discuss their goals and their plans and, um, looking ahead for two years, so they can, and help them with their proposals. So, next steps is, uh, the board adoption of budget on July 14th, which is the next board meeting. August, we will be submitting, um, the official document to the state prior to August 31st. Again, we'll begin the budgeting by priority cycle in October, and then we'll start calculating the revenue in December again based on the governor's, uh, first look at the budget. I'd like to end by thanking the board and the district leadership for your continued support and guidance with the budget process and development. Your commitment to aligning the budget to the strategic plan has clearly created a culture of intentionality and accountability regarding program, department, and building budget. Additionally, I'd like to thank the program and department managers for their patience and openness to budgeting a different way than they're used to, because the proposals require a lot more time and effort and dedication than just rolling a budget. And lastly, I'd like to recognize the budget team for their hard work and dedication. I have, I wanna just recognize them here. I've got, if you'd stand up, please. Jody Berry, Robin Derby, Walter Buford, and our newest member, Josh Dela. I'd like to especially recognize Robin Derby. She has worked for the district for 16 years, and she has projected our revenues within half a percent accuracy.
All right.
And that's huge.
Yeah, no kidding.
She is going to be retiring in December, and Josh Dela will be taking her place. So, we are going to definitely miss her. She has a real crystal ball with her calculations, so.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Okay, Director Hines, you want to start?
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions. When we talk about the reserves, and you'll remember that when we last met, uh, have this conversation, we expressed, um, caution around spending the reserves too dramatically, given the uncertainty of what's gonna happen in Olympia. Can you give us a sense, if we maintained our current level of reserves, what wouldn't get funded?
What would not?
Yeah, what sorts of things would not get funded if we stayed status quo and didn't have that intentional spend down in the reserves?
Sure. Uh, you guys have an appendix on the end of your-
Yeah, I'm just gonna suggest you show us that, that slide. I think it'll answer some questions, please.
So, these are the areas that, um-
Ms. Bell, can you click that on the screen, so, as well? So, is it?
Is that, is that the one we're talking about?
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
It just looks different on mine. Thank you.
All right.
Mine, too.
So, these are the areas that are included in that 6 million dollars of, um, carryover savings. So, there's about 3.77 million of teaching supports. There's the million dollars of technology investment. We have 882 of systems improvements, and 373 in innovative schools. And though 100% of those are not one-time costs, there are many costs in there that are just investment purposes, and we heard you when you said that. So, there are things, for example, in the innovative schools, IDEA is only starting out with 125 students, but they have to carry the cost of administration for 500 students. And so, s- that 25, 75% difference is paid for there. So, next year, it'll be reduced, and the year after, it'll be reduced. And then ultimately, they'll have enough students to cover that. And again, the systems improvements should be, you know, improvements in system to make us operate leaner and better.
So, I guess if your answer to your question would be then, if we didn't spend that six, this is what we wouldn't invest in. Is that correct?
I guess what I'm trying to get my head wrapped around is when I look at fund balance by year for the 1516 year, it shows a 42.57.
Correct.
And for 1617, the 33.2.
Right. So, ultimately, what that would mean-
So, that's a 9 million. That's 9.3.
We, we would leave, uh, about, so, we'd leave about 13 million over and above the debt and fiscal policy to address any deficiencies, which the levy for the 1819, if that, if that levy cliff comes in, it's about 6 million.
And we've seen, I mean, there were proposals that would have tens of millions of dollars potentially impacting the district. I just, I, I caution us to spend down during this time of uncertainty. I have a second question. Uh, I thought I heard 250,000 dollars for transportation to sporting events?
There, we have just set aside 250,000 dollars for further analysis into, um, helping support the ASB with their travel for sporting events, because they're struggling.
And would that be for teams and students?
I believe so.
Okay.
It's, it really comes down to, when students make the playoffs and teams make the playoffs, oftentimes, those are, in our current practices, charged back to that ASB, which, uh, takes away more, uh, local control, if you will, by the local ASB. And so, one of the things that we heard that from students, we've heard that from our schools, from our athletic departments, saying, "It would be great if we were able to, if the opportunity came to fund those." And so, the, the, the analysis has to come at, "How much of that 250,000 dollars is really needed?" It would, it wouldn't be just distributed, but it would be based on need.
And I appreciate that. I had Lincoln High School this year, and I know with the basketball playoffs, with both their boys and girls making the tournament, they had some challenges around transportation. It's not something they had budgeted for.
Right.
And they didn't have an ASB that could instantly raise it, and we try to be equitable. So, I think us looking holistically for all of the schools, so that it's not a means test of who can get their kids to include students. I, we obviously need to get the athletes there, but the fan base is a part of the experience. It's a competitive advantage. Um, so I appreciate you, uh, looking into how we might be able to better support those schools.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. Director Con.
Director Hines took my question. I was gonna wanna go back to slide nine and talk about the ASB funds, but that's been Chris. Thank you.
Director Winskill.
So, um, I have a question about developing the budget. So, when you take I 728 and I 732, um, and you had certain amounts for their, do we realize those amounts? Because they were kind of suspended, uh, and reduced by the legislature. Or is it sort of ghost money that-
So, those are part of the ghost monies that are included in the levy base. And so, that's part of the levy cliff. So, in the 1718 year, if they go away, they will reduce that as, as ghost revenue, and then that's where our significant decrease in tax dollars would come from.
Okay. And then MSOC. Um, I know there are some districts that are using it for salaries. Are we keeping within the, um, purpose of the law and using it just for those items?
Yes, and then some. Um, in fact, we are required, there's a new reporting, uh, requirement out that we need to, uh, tell the state, how much do we spend on MSOCs, and how we spend it, and so forth. And do we, for every, you know, X amount of dollars they give us for a student, are we spending that? And if not, why not? But we're gonna be the opposite. We're gonna say, "We're spending so much more than what they're giving us for that purpose." So, uh, that'll come out, I wanna say, in the fall, um, we have to provide that for them.
Okay, and, uh, I know I had something else, but can't find it right now, so I'll let, I'll move on.
Ask a follow-up to the question that Director Winskill just asked?
Mm-mm.
So, with the levy cliff, though, can I, um, in I 732, and in, in years where we actually get a COLA, like this one where it was 1. something percent, um, that reduces the impact of the levy cliff to some extent. It would be calculated as the full amount it should have been, and that would have been included in the levy base, right? So, since we actually got something, is that-
Somewhat. So, for every dollar that the state says we're gonna give an increase in, in pay, they only actually pay about 75% of that. So, the levy dollars have to pick up that other 25%. And so, you know, and that's where, on that one slide, it says, "Oh, we gave everyone 1.8% increase." There was like over a $500,000 variance between what we actually have to pay and what they gave us from an impact standpoint.
I remembered my question. Staff mix. What, what, um, is that changing for us? Uh, you know, you used to have a pretty high staff mix, um, doll- uh, dollar amount.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that offhand. It does change every year, because it's based on your, um, education and, and experience of your, of your staff.
Yeah, it'd just be interesting to know.
Do you guys happen to know what that is?
It's going down based on more funding for teachers. That means you get lower, um, credits, so the newer, the staff mix is projected to go down.
And I know the, the state is-
Can you tell what she said, so the, I'm sorry, Chris.
The state is, um, assuming with all these lower class sizes that were flooding, and we have all these new teachers, you know, even though we have a hard time finding them, but they're assuming they're new. So, they are funding us based on a low, um, experience and low credit. But, um, did I miss what you said?
No, they're not funding. It's what is our teacher-
Ms. Derby, can you do me a huge favor? Can you come up to the podium?
Yeah, I want you to just come up and explain it to us. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you. The staff mix factor is determined by the teachers we have on hand. As we start hiring more and more teachers, they're coming in at the bottom level of our salary, so their credits are, are lower. So, it's not that the state is going lower. It's who we've hired and who we have on hand. So, as we get more funding and we can hire more teachers, we're anticipating that our staff mix factor is going to go down. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Further question? Director Escud.
I have no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Awesome. Great, uh, great presentation. Um, I just wanna make sure that I understand what carryovers and everybody else does. That savings that we got from our budgeting by priorities this year, correct? And that's money that we did not expend on certain programs. For example, CNI, where we buy, uh, materials, but we get to carry over for the next year for implementation.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, those are just monies that, number one, we got through savings, and number two, are unspent dollars that we're allowed to carry over by the state.
We plan to spend an additional, over 10 million dollars this year, and it just didn't happen.
It didn't. So, that, that's part of where that bumps in that 1415. Okay. All right, I wanted to explain that. The other thing is, I wanted to ask you, this year, we saved up the 6 million dollars. Are we building savings in for, you know, they're built savings in? Could you say, tell us what that is?
Yes. So, that's the 13 million dollars over and above. So, the budget for next year includes 13 million over the 5% debt and fiscal. So, it's a 33 million dollar balance in the bank. And, and debt and fiscal is for emergencies. I mean, board policy is that's, we're always trying to strive to that. You don't ever wanna go below it, but that's what it's for. So, if you run into trouble and you have an emergency for some particular reason, you are allowed to dip into that, and that's the purpose of it.
Dr. Garcia.
So, yeah, just on that slide six that we're at, and I think it just addresses, uh, a little bit of, uh, Director Hines. So, the, the, the 13 million dollars is above the policy for savings. But what's in, the, the part that I continue to have to grasp onto is, is, um, we have to create a, a budget capacity to spend the dollars and approve those. Uh, but we, and if you look at the top paragraph or top chart, on average, we, whatever's been approved, we've been underspending. And so, when we looked at this and said, "Where does, what, what is a safe number?" It's that 6 million dollars. You can see that, that's conservatively over that four years where we have been above that. And so, even if you choose to approve this budget, which is the 6 million dollar carryover, um, it's highly likely that, for all the reasons that we continue to have, that we would come under that still again. Um, and so, why 6 million dollars? It was based on, uh, what is a conservative number that we continue to underspend, if you will, and I hate to use underspend, but for, because we don't have positions that filled, or whatever the timing things are. That's why 6 million, because we heard you loud and clear, don't go just spend because it's there. Uh, spend it, uh, if you, we need it. What are the intentional things? And so, that's the, the vetting process of, these are the items. You can see that they're targeted towards academic excellence, uh, ways to improve.
Okay.
All right. Um, thank you. I mean, I know what, personally know what this job is when you get into this and start doing this. I think we're getting, now that we're in our budgeting by priorities, that you're getting more comfortable. We're getting more comfortable, and we're certainly showing the results of that process as it's linked to our strategic plan and our benchmarks, and it's showing us how well we're doing. And I, I anticipate we'll see savings each year. Uh, they may go up, they may go down, depending on what programs, shifts, and things occur. So, thank you. Uh, we really appreciate all the hard work, and you did a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Back to our agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board on budget matters? Dr. Garcia?
No, we do not.
All right. Then, um, since I lost my agenda, let me get back to the-
This is my reminder that you need to make the request of the audience three times to see if anyone is interested to speak at the budget hearing, and then we will close the hearing.
Oh, all right, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to address the audience? Or anyone in the audience wishing to address the board? I'm sorry.
On the budget.
If you, on the budget, only on the budget. If you wish to do so, you may come forward. If not, anyone wishing to address us on the budget? We will take public comment also on other matters later. Anyone else? Okay, may I decla-? One more. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Anyone? Hearing is closed. All right, um,
Number 10, superintendent's report.
All right, Dr. Garcia.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped one ahead. Members of the public wishing to address the board.
That's what I thought. You, yeah, okay, great. Members of the public wishing to address the board, item number nine. School board members encourage public participation. Your input is, is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The deputy superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You have three minutes to share, uh, your comments. Uh, you will ha- see a clock over there. You will receive a ding at two minutes, and then you'll get one when your three minutes is up, and please conclude your remarks at that time. Uh, we also ask that your remarks, uh, be civil and appropriate as you address the board and the public, and that we do not talk about individual people when we appear before the board. Okay, thank you. With that, Dr. Garcia, who is first?
Mr. Lucas Muraldo, regarding superintendent contract.
Good evening to, to all. My name's Lucas Muraldo with Vibrant Schools, and, uh, it is a pleasure to offer testimony tonight. This is gonna be a very easy one, uh, for us. We, uh, wanted to compliment the president of the board and the school board members for the extension of Superintendent Carlos Santorno's contract. Um, we have been grateful for the leadership and for the, the progress that's been made under the board and with Superintendent Santorno. And we are very grateful that the board has recognized that and extended her contract for the next three years. Um, we have found Superintendent Santorno to be someone that is approachable, that invites our engagement, that continues to sustain a relationship, especially with a, a critical partner such as ourselves. And we, we do not, we do not take that for granted. Um, it's my understanding that Superintendent Santorno is in South Africa, um, through, through the Sister Cities program. And as I was preparing my statements, I was recalling something that was shared by a professor about how South Africans greet one another. Rather than saying hello, they greet each other with a question, "How are the children?" And the response is, "The children are well." What we know we share with the superintendent and with this board is the sentiments behind that greeting. Um, our questions and our engagements are always motivated by, "How are the children?" And our, our desire is that the response is, "The children are well." We are grateful to have a superintendent that understands that in her bones, and a board that supports that superintendent's leadership. And so, we look forward to further engagement, and we wanna praise you for the, the three-year extension of Superintendent Santorno's contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. Appreciate your remarks and your contributions. Thank you.
Next, regarding the superintendent contract, Ms. Sally Perkins.
Good evening, President Fiala, members of the board. This is the best meeting of the year, because the pre-K kids are here with their books. I just love this meeting. It's the fourth one I've been at. It's really fun. Um, I, I also wanna speak to the superintendent's contract- I also want to speak to the superintendent's contract. I want to, first, I want to thank the board for really sharpening up the superintendent evaluation process, working with the superintendent to create mutual goals, and then to create ways to look at evidence for how progress is being achieved. I think that's a really powerful process, and I think the board's done a great job with it. Looking forward to the report on the progress and to see where you all feel really good progress has been made in areas that you're hoping to see additional progress in the future. The second thing I want to say to the board is thank you for creating stability at the top. The district's implementing a lot of things that are long-term in nature. Your strategic plan goals are long-term in nature, and the way that gets done is to have stability at the top so that it's clear to everybody that you are staying the course. And so I think the extension of Carla's contract really sends that message very powerfully to the community. And I think the community appreciates that because we know we can count on this ongoing conversation about goals and progress. Lastly, I want to say that in my experience in working with Superintendent Santorno, I think she is an exceptional superintendent. And it's really nice to see the board publicly affirm this by extending her contract for the maximum time you can, so that she will be our superintendent at, at least until June 30th, 2019. Vibrant Schools has a, has an interesting relationship with you all. We agree on a lot of things. There's some things we have some pretty lively conversations about, and I, for one, am looking forward to more lively conversations with the superintendent in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Appreciate your comments as always.
Ms. Patty Gurrell from the Sam, Soda-Sammy community.
Hi. I'm Patty Gurrell. I'm a parent. I have two sons that have graduated from Soda and Sammy. They both loved high school and headed directly to college, which is a small miracle for, for one of them. My middle son was diagnosed early on with dysgraphia. While having a higher-than-average IQ, the act of writing is very taxing for him. His IEP in high school asked for two accommodations, extra time and access to a computer. Instead of giving him the computer access, in his freshman year at his traditional high school, he was placed in pull-out special ed classes, excluding him from the other students in classes. He then decided on his own that he wanted to try the math being taught in mainstream classes. His special ed teacher told him he wouldn't be able to do it. He went and requested the work from the math teacher. When he asked the special ed teacher for assistance, she said, "No, I can't help you." We met with her, and she told us the same thing. He just won't be able to do it. That's when we heard about Soda and its all-inclusive special ed mainstream classes with a bridge for assistance and the use of a computer. Our son eventually dismissed his bridge and completed not only his regular classes but honors classes without any assistance from anybody. Inclusion prepares our children for the reality of being part of a community. Pull-out exclusion classes do not. My special ed child has now graduated from a four-year college with a degree in sciences. I want to point out, we're not wealthy, we're not privileged, not even technically white. I'm Mexican, my husband is Turkish. We both come from large, hard-working immigrant families where nobody's graduated from college on either side. My special ed child, who would have had no hope of getting into college, in his special ed classes, is the first one to do that, all on his own. Times were hard back then. The free and reduced lunches were a godsend, as were the orca cards issued to the Soda-Sammy kids, both as a way for the child to get to school, because we were both working, and a way to get them familiar and comfortable with public transit, which we could all stand to use more of. What I'm, my point is that if not for the Soda and Sammy communities, my son would never have gotten to college. And any resources that you devote to that sort of a class, a school, is money well-spent. And I hope that you continue to develop schools like that, an idea, and hopefully the other high schools will begin the inclusion as well. And I want to thank you for that opportunity for my son, both of my sons.
Thank you for your comments. We really appreciate it. We're going through a period now of moving towards that model in all of our schools, and we appreciate that.
Good. Everyone I've ever spoken to says if there was a high school like that, when I was in high school, it would have been so much better. They both loved it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Mr. Alton McDonald regarding racism in the Tacoma Public Schools.
Good evening. My name, my name is Alton McDonald. I am the president of the New Century Justice Network. I've come before this board, and I have talked about racism in the Tacoma School District. As I said, and listened to the good things that you're doing as a school district and the school board, there's also some other things that need to be fixed. And I must say that the issue of racism needs to be addressed by this board. It's not something that is dreamt off by black employees of your district. It is something that's actually happening. And then you have the employees who are in your district who bring issues to the forefront, then they're subject to retaliation. The superintendent can't say she don't know. And the board, you can't say you don't know, because now I'm telling you. And so I've told you before, and I'm here again reminding you and telling you again, that the issue of racism must be addressed by you, the board, with direction, by giving the superintendent the necessary directive that she needs to address those issues. Also, in conjunction to that, we have school, we have Edison, which is the elementary school, the principal, who is currently there, she's out now, school doesn't break, have kicked out a child with a disability, and the child is a black student. Kick them out of the school. Tell a parent that, "We can't educate your child," and there was an IEP in place. And that principal will remain as a principal here at the school to continue the things that she does or not be transferred somewhere else. There with the superintendent, I hope that you're hearing me. I hope the board is hearing me. This is the things that I talk about, how our children are targeted in the school at a very early age. As they traverse through the educational system, they become more of a target. And then when we, those of us who complete our studies, and then we get a job working for this district, then we are subject to discrimination. So it's an ongoing battle for black people in this America, in Pierce County, in the city of Tacoma. And so I'm asking the board that you must address the issue of racism and how black educators, black employees, or how they are being treated and being mistreated in your district, and what is it that you're going to do? I hope you put together a plan for the 2016, 2017 school year to address the issue of racism in your district. It must be addressed. It will not go away by itself. It must be addressed. It will not go away by itself. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do you have anyone else?
Yes, one more. Ms. Kristin Lomax regarding Section 504 and dietary restrictions.
Hi, my name is Kristin Lomax, and I'm a parent of three Tacoma Public School children. Here's my twins. One of the twins has a disability. He has two conflicting disabilities. He's on a 504 plan. One of his disabilities is type 1 diabetes and celiac disease on top of that. Tacoma Public Schools lack celiac awareness. They don't have any kind of food implement, food, food implementing for celiac disease students and children who have difficulty eating USDA-approved school food. He has a prescription from a physician that states that he's only allowed to eat gluten-free products, and Tacoma School District is not a gluten-free facility. And it's difficult for me to provide meals for him already, and for him to go to school six hours a day, five days a week, and not have any meal is very, very difficult for his learning and his academic achievement, achievement. I'm just here today to ask for the board, the school district, to implement more gluten-free products so that not only my son can eat a proper meal, but other children who have the same kind of disability that he has. He's on a carb count, and the carbs determine how much insulin he receives. And when we're out in public and going to restaurants, we have to choose which restaurant have a gluten-free menu, because he can't eat the food unless they have specific gluten-free dietary need, dietary accommodations. I've contacted OSPI, and they weren't no help because they have guidelines of their own for people who have dietary restrictions, and they don't consider my son's dietary restriction. They only consider peanut butter and things like that. When I do provide meals for him at school, oftentimes the students quarrel with him because he has a better lunch than they have. And I don't want any kind of favoritism or special privileges for him. It's just implementing a choice, an option, for him to eat like his peers. And that'll eliminate him having low blood sugars, high above-normal blood sugars. He has to be excused from class a lot because of his, you know, his blood sugars having to be abnormal, and he goes to the nurse often. And I'm just, wish the school board would be on board with implementing gluten-free products. That's all.
Thank you very much for making us aware of that issue. Okay, is that it?
That is it for this evening.
Okay, public comment is closed. Moving on, superintendent's report, 10-1 Raymond Hall. Mr. Eisenagel and Mr. Edlund, I believe.
As they come up, I'd like to, this was a request from our board to give an update on where we are with our services in Raymond Hall. We're very excited about what's happening in Raymond Hall in the sense of how we're reaching out all of our, for all of our students. We have made some significant changes in the last couple of years, and so we wanted to give you a quick update with this. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Principal Eisenagel and Edlund for an update.
Distinguished board members and Dr. Garcia, thank you for inviting us this evening to talk a little bit about what's been going on over at Raymond Hall Day Reporting School. Three years ago, Leonard Edlund, my assistant principal, and I came on board, and we looked around at what was set up for the students up there and decided that there needed to be some significant changes. In order to make significant change, you have to have some really great people. So I want to publicly acknowledge the, our staff up at Raymond Hall. I'd also like to publicly acknowledge Mr. Leonard Edlund, the assistant principal, as far as implementing all of the things that we've been working on. I do not have a certificate nor a $500 check to give him, but I did promise him lunch tomorrow at McDonald's. Some of the things that, that we looked at right off the bat was the curriculum and how things worked because of how quickly students come in and out of Raymond Hall's. And so we went to a, a complete changeover in curriculum to Edge Annuity, which is what we use around the district as well, which is a computer-based, individualized program. And that's made significant changes. Mr. Edlund implemented a behavior modification plan that's based on a point system. Point system is then, becomes part of a level system, and then the students get to access rewards that they get from that. Mr. Edlund will go over those. There's, we also changed up who was available to go to Day Reporting School, which is a very separate facility from Day, from Raymond Hall. So prior to, two years ago, general ed students, regular ed students were, were not allowed to attend. But there are some times when, when students should, that, that's the appropriate place for students to attend, and so we've been able to increase the number of students who attend Day Reporting by making the requirements to do so less based on whether they're adjudicated or not. One of the things I just want to tell about Mr. Edlund is that from top to bottom up at Raymond Hall and Day Reporting Schools, he's been instrumental in finding not only what the issues are, but how to resolve those issues. He's been an active member on the SEJDC Advisory Committee. We attend quarterly institutional ed meetings around the state with other, other folks to see what's going on in other places. And one of the other nice things is, in evaluating three years ago, the budget situation and how underfunded we are throughout the state, then a group of people got together within that committee and, and worked diligently, and Mr. Edlund's been on that as well. And our budget numbers, as the budget people can tell you, has gotten better. It's not perfect yet, but it's gotten better significantly each year for the last three years. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Edlund, who will go over the fantastic slide presentation.
Oh, yeah. Speaking of which, on the budget aspect, we've been heavily involved in writing a, proposal for the legislature for this year. Decision package will go before the legislature. It'll be ready to be presented to them in July. OSPI is finishing up the final draft on that right now, but we've been heavily involved in that for about a year and a half. Well, I guess we'll start by, Raymond Hall Schools is not simply the detention facility. We, we actually have three different parts to what we do. We have the detention facility, which are juveniles who have been picked up for various criminal and civil offenses sometimes, and locked up there. We also house now juveniles under the age of 18 who have committed adult crimes, and we're holding about 23 of those at Raymond Hall right now, who will be facing some, they are facing some rather serious crimes as adults and awaiting adult trials, and some of which have already pled out. So we still have about 23 of those left right now at Raymond Hall and the detention facility. Day Reporting School is set up to accept students who are on juvenile probation, or they may be coming back out of juvenile rehabilitation facilities. We're also housing a lot of truancy kids there that we haven't been able to get to go to school in other places that are coming to school at Day Reporting School, or kids that have maybe struggled in some other academic settings, and maybe they're just underserved or at risk, and that's, that's kind of our niche, is working with those kids. And it's honestly, it's a, it's a real pleasure to get to work with them and see the breakthroughs that we get with them. And the Tacoma Pierce County Education Center, also known as Tacoma Pierce County Jail, we had abandoned that program because they'd moved all their juveniles to Raymond Hall. Now we have one back down there that we're serving again. Basically, it's a protective custody situation for that student, so we are providing service to that student again as well. Every student, every day, it's exactly what we believe in there. We have a very small but tight staff. We serve and process more than 2,000 students a year in, and we serve and process more than 2,000 students a year out at the detention facility. That is comprised of about 650 different students, so there is a recidivism right there, kids coming in and out. But it's about 650 different students a year that we're serving there.
And real quickly, those are not all Tacoma Public School students, for those that are watching at home.
No. Let me, let me confirm that.
It's okay.
Typically, it's, it's around, you know, 60% is the, is the magic number there. Average stay is about five days for those short-term kids that are coming in and out up there. So, so we have to have a very good program for these kids, and that's where Edge Annuity comes in to play, because we have students that come in. We give them assessment when they come in on math and reading. We place them in the course they're supposed to be in, or where they score. We also get transcripts as fast as we can from their previous schools, and we try to get them into the right courses. If they happen to leave, we just disable their account. When they come back, they can pick back up if they have to, if they end up coming back into Raymond Hall again. We meet the individual needs of every single student. You can imagine how difficult it used to be having seventh-grade students and 12th-grade students in the same classroom with not individualized instruction, really. They were, you know, all working on the same thing in one classroom. Now, we have 15 kids in a classroom, and we might have 12 or 13 different levels of, of things going on in exactly 15 different places at the same time. So we are working very hard to meet the needs of those kids. You can see on my slide here of this one, this is one of our Day Reporting classrooms. Where students are working on their curriculum. We have a teacher there, Kelly Carone, who is working with students, helping a student there in the English classroom. These kids that are at our Day Reporting School can work on their curriculum anytime, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as long as they have internet access. Just some of our different courses completed at Day Reporting School and Raymond Hall. We complete about 250 different classes a year, which as I mentioned to you earlier, Raymond Hall, we have a lot of kids in and out very quickly, so that's very impressive that we end up completing those kind of numbers for our students. And these are all Common Core aligned classes that are very valid and they get transcribed as they complete them.
Mr. Edlund, approximately how many credits were completed prior to the change a year? Approximately?
About a hundred credits a year, but most of them were general studies credits. Now we're completing math, English, history, science, health classes that are going directly towards specific graduation requirements.
So one of the important things for us is, when we were thinking about the revisions is unfortunately, students may make some mistakes. Our goal was is to design something that allowed them not to fall further behind in school. That allowed them to work through those as they were working through their mistakes in the hopes that they would have a better hope and opportunity when they left and be able to go back into a school setting or complete somewhere and not have to feel like they're so far behind. And so we measured those number of completed classes with a lot of pride because we recognize that that's students that are taking, that are Washington State approved, no matter where they come from or where they go, that they then can take with them back into their school setting and whether that's a community college or a G D completion or an Open Doors or one of our traditional schools and say, you can't take this one away from me. I've earned that.
Major success story for us that happened last year was we had a student that came over. She was a senior from Big Sky, Montana. And she came over and got herself in some trouble while she was over here on spring break. And we were able to work directly with her high school in Big Sky for classes that she needed to graduate from high school. So she was in our facility at Raymond Hall from April, the beginning of April, when she came here for spring vacation until mid-May. We were able to take the material that she needed for a couple of classes she was working on, design the classes that she needed and transfer the grades and the assignments that she'd finished back to them. That young lady graduated in June in Big Sky, Montana last year. That's a major success story for us. Once again, working on the benchmark of academic excellence with our program in Edge Annuity. Behavior mod program that Mr. Eisnagel talked about a little bit ago goes largely towards academic excellence, but also towards safety in our schools. A lot of our students in the Day Reporting School, most of them, if not all of them, have some social issues where they haven't quite figured out how to behave or be in the right school setting all the time. So we implemented a behavior modification program designed not only to improve their social skills, but to implement safety in the classrooms. Students are given the opportunity to earn their points. It's much like work. We tell them, you earn your points. We don't give them to you. We don't take them away. You earn them and we score them every period. This is what you earned this period. We give them a heads up halfway through the period, kind of where they're at, and this is what they need to do to pick it up if they want to earn all their points. We also reward them for academic progress at the end of the day. And you can see on the backside of the card to the right there, the right lower quadrant, is we put in there their daily progress. We track their academic progress every single day of how much progress they make in each class. That's a daily thing for every student we track. That's not once a week. It's every day and then we touch base. We have what's called a check and connect on Wednesday mornings where every student, about four different students per staff member, sit down and we talk about their progress from the week before. Once again, going towards, going towards safety in the schools as well. This is kind of the levels that we talk about every week. Students have the right to earn their way up the level chart. Everybody starts on bronze and then every week we reorder them depending on how many points they earned for the week. We had to add diamond all the way over about halfway through the year this year because we had so many kids that were getting to gold and they were like, well, what do I do if I can get to gold in four days? Why do I need to work the fifth day? So we created another level, so. We want them to want to do better and as you can see there, these kids were doing better. And there are different privileges, you know, different little perks and things that come along the line as you're moving up the ladder there from right to left. So we just keep tweaking this program to make it better for the kids. So the rewards program, the kids get to spend their points in the store on Friday afternoons. It's the last thing we do every week. It's staff-supported. We put everything in there. The kids get to come in and shop and they can save their money, just like a bank. Or they can spend it just like I like to go crazy on Mad Money on Saturdays. So after-school activities is something else we worked with as far as the safety thing, just keeping kids in organized activities. We have ping pong after-school, board games, and we're working with a couple of organizations for art and music as well. Hoping that comes in next year as well as a P E program. Laptops to kids we got to be part of this year. We were super excited about. Gives our kids an opportunity to access the internet from home or from a library or Starbucks or wherever they happen to get to. Guest speakers, we had the privilege of a World War II veteran to come in and speak with our kids this year. Outstanding. So working on partnerships as well, community partnerships. We had Thanksgiving baskets for every student enrolled at Day Reporting School. That included a turkey and everything you would need for a nice holiday meal for your whole, for their whole family. Their families came in to pick them up and the three that couldn't pick them up, I delivered them to their house. So everybody got to have those and that was super exciting. Every student, every day. That's our motto. I really thank you a lot for allowing us to have the privilege of working with these kids. It's great. We'd love to have you come out and visit anytime if you'd like to come walk through.
Very quickly, because we're short for time. Leonard really pushed the parent piece, which was never the case up there prior. So as far as conferences go, when everyone else is conferencing, so are our kids and our families and they really appreciate that. He also instituted the requirement for our teachers to call five parents once a week and have a log. And the parents are so excited because they have never gotten a call from their school saying their students were doing really well before. And so this is an opportunity for them to really get excited about that. And again, that's Mr. Edlund, so.
One last one I'd throw out there. Having the program work as almost like a sister city with the Fresh Start programs, the Goodwill programs, the Willie Stewart Academy, and then having those connections with some of our comprehensives really helped the transition for kids. If they choose, if they choose to go into another school, the adults are working together to make that happen fluidly. If they choose to continue their education where they are, we're going to support them there. So I hope that you see there's, we're very proud of the staff at Raymond Hall and the connectivity to your strategic plan goals.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks, good work. All right.
Did you have, gentlemen, one second?
What, are there any questions or comments?
I'd one of each.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, let me just start by thanking both of you for your visionary leadership. That's incredible. And it's, I mean, it sometimes comes across as cliche every student, every day, but that's the will of this board is we want to take care of kids and meet them where they are and support them. And it starts at the top with your leadership and your dedication, your commitment. You just exude it. I mean, I can tell you care about those kids. You want them to be successful and that's what it takes. And it's obvious those kids pick up on that and that's why we're starting to see some success. With the behavior, I was wondering, are we using Tacoma Whole Child Initiative or?
We're starting to work our way that direction and it's kind of a mix between P B I S, but we've kind of had to tweak it a little bit just to kind of get kids on board with figuring out getting caught doing good. You know, getting caught being good in the classroom or doing what you're asked to do. And, you know, we have extra, we give them an extra bonus point if they're caught doing something outstanding, positive behavior, so.
If we've not formally involved, Dr. Brenner from Center for Strong Schools, it might be an interesting conversation to have to see if there's a way to.
And we're involved with Greg.
Oh, Greg.
We're involved with him, with the S E J D C Committee that we're involved with as well. And we just met with him two Fridays ago. So, I mean, we are involved with him on a fairly consistent basis.
This was all started with us really not having connection outside. This is stuff that we've studied ourselves and we came up with. Any kind of correlation between, I mean, Behavior Mod is a new concept.
That's great. And then the comment was with the decision package that's being prepared, I would encourage us to take a look at it and see if that's something as a board we could support as part of our state legislative agenda.
And it was, actually, a lot of it was modeled after the original proposal that Andrea Frazier put forward a few years back. We use that as kind of a starting point to work off of. But yeah, the final draft, well, not final draft, but final review copy should be put out by O S P I. T J Kelly, who lives here in town, is actually finalizing the draft report of that to send out to us for review. And I'd be happy to share that with you guys as well. That's been, I mean, we've met numerous, numerous times over the last year and a half for that, so.
Thank you.
I honestly have a ton of questions on this topic and I'll show my cards. I used to work at O S P I and I drafted one of the last decision packages O S P I put forward on this topic, so I have a ton of questions. But I'm only going to ask one. So in terms of integration of this program, it sounds like you're bringing in a lot of best practices that are working to support student achievement in other areas of the district. So, and this, the change in the academic program offering for students is just great because students just have sporadic access to good, strong programs when they're in and out of detention centers quickly. My question's more about data though. With students coming in on an average of five days and for the purposes of funding, you needing to enroll them in the program and count them for institutional ed, but then if they're gone in five days, the next month they're back in a traditional school or in another. How do we track, and this might be a question for Dr. Garcia, but how do we track and keep a handle on how students are progressing? When they come in, they're out and then come back in? How's that going for you?
Yes. Our numbers that we report on the first of every month don't truly reflect the number of students we serve, obviously, because our funding model and that of the juvenile detention facility's funding model are very different. Their goal is to get them released and back into the community. And they have a report that they have to report for the number of average bed nights on the first of the month. And our report is for the first of the month on the number of students we're serving. So we want high numbers and they want low numbers.
And our numbers are in compliance with O S P I, correct?
Our numbers are in compliance exactly with O S P I and they have changed some of the things they're doing strictly because of the questions we have asked in the last couple of years about how we count kids on the first day of the month. And we have overriding count and we communicate on a daily basis with other school districts if we have a student come in. Even if they were in school on the first day of the month, if they are in the facility by midnight the first day of the month, they are counted by us. And we have to adjust E six seven twos and P two two threes to match that between districts. Now, tracking kids, we, I have extensive spreadsheets on that. We track every kid as they come in every single time and when they're released. Any student that's been in for more than ten days, we track transitionally to make sure where they're at. Obviously Tacoma kids, we track more than that even, but kids that are outside of the district, if they've been in ten days or longer when they transition out, we know where they're at and whether or not they've enrolled someplace else. And we have that in a spreadsheet as well.
I guess it would just be great to know, in some future date, how students, like since you've implemented this change and you've provided students with the opportunity to take credits with them and go, how they, students who go, how their academic, what their academic trajectory looks like.
Yeah, we actually have some, two students who are Fresh Start students now. I have four students who are at Bates right now. So, and we have a couple that have finished some employment training programs through another local agency here in town.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question. How many people are in the Day Reporting any given day?
In Day Reporting? We got as high as forty-one this year at one point in time. On attendance factor, I would say we're probably going to average somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-five students in attendance. You know, once the year gets started, we always start a little slow because it's hard to get those kids in school the very first day. But we do a lot of phone calling and door knocking that week before school starts.
So also, what is the attendance? Is it fairly decent?
Yeah, we run, typically, we run about seventy percent of the students that are on our active roster are in attendance, which considering their history, that's a significant increase from where they would be. And we have several kids who never went to school. I mean, they're serious truancy kids, hadn't been in school in a couple of years and we get them to start and they come a day or two days a week maybe. And then, once they figure out that we really do care about them and we're following up with them every single day and checking in with them every single day, I have a couple I can't get rid of. I mean, hour after school, I'm like, come on, ping pong's fun, but let's go home now, you know, so.
Well, I like what I hear because I actually worked there as a K C to a probation officer for three years, quite a while ago. But, and I have heard in recent years that there's been some issues at the Day Reporting. And so it sounds like you've got it going in the right direction.
We're headed the right direction. I don't want to say we turned the corner because we have serious questions come up. I make a boo-boo somewhere.
Thank you.
So I thank you for the report. I have to tell you that this is probably the single program in T P S that I know the least about, so I'm eager to learn more.
Come visit.
I would love to come visit and I would love Andrea to come with me because it sounds like she's also a mastermind, so I could learn a ton in a single day. But I'm looking at that six fifty number with the 2,000 enrollments and withdrawals. So, you know, that's an average of three. So I'm just curious, is it really that every kid is coming in and out three times? Or that, you know, sixty percent of them are stable, but a lot of them are coming out fifteen times?
I would say that probably about, I couldn't tell you the exact number, but if I were to guess, because I'm pretty close on this, I would say that about twenty percent of the kids are the continual, you know, you'll see them five, six times. And then, a lot of them you'll see one time and you'll never see them again, which is exactly what I want to have happen. You know, I would love, I would love to not be able to have a job because there's no kids. That's exactly what we would love, right? We'd love to not have that, to have that not happen. But realistically, you know, it's our job to make a difference for those kids when we do get them.
It sounds like you are.
So we don't want to see them there, but we want to see them in another program.
No, no, I get.
Right. I don't want to see them locked up. I want to see them in a comprehensive.
You want to see them stay in a U S educational, stable environment in the first place where they're happy.
But while I have, while we have them, we're going to make a difference for them.
Yeah, but when they need you, you're there. Okay, thank you very much and I'll definitely follow up on a visit.
I guess my only question is, I mean, I think this is, you know, a hundred and fifty percent improvement from what I know it was in my previous job when I was mayor and we were somewhat city-involved in that process with juvenile justice. And it was just sort of a, kids just sitting there doing, you know, messing around and not what we wanted. And this is, it sounds like we're really doing well in terms of, and what I hear from a couple of the judges that I know and one of my neighbors, prosecutor, spent out there said.
They like to come visit now the judges and the prosecutors.
Yeah, and he said it's really, said give kudos if you have an opportunity, so I am. My question is, when the kids transition back to perhaps to one of the comprehensive high schools or to Willie Stewart Academy, how do you help them make that transition?
Well, we set up the original, the initial meeting with them and we tried to actually go with them.
Okay.
We tried to send our transition counselor to the meeting with the student and the family to help them get re-acclimated into that program, wherever that may be, whether it's our district or one of the neighboring districts that we have or one of the other programs.
Because I'm sure for some of the kids, that's a difficult deal to go back.
It's a daunting task, yeah.
Spend some time at Raymond Hall, some, that's not the easiest thing in the world, I'm sure.
Well, we're hopeful that, you know, maybe their attendance secretary and their counselor might know, but we're hopeful that they're using discretion.
Great, thank you, and I'd love to come visit also.
We'd love to have you.
Great, I haven't been out there in a long time, so thank you very much. Great report, thanks. All right, we have a consent agenda to adopt. I have a motion, please.
I move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second and all is in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries consent agenda is adopted. All right, quarterly financial update, item number twelve. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly.
Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org/financialreports. Since this is the second quarter, we do have a financial update tonight. Ms. Bell?
Based on um, the timing of the budget hearing, we did um, opt to not actually do a presentation for this, but we do have the second quarter financial reports available to you.
Okay, so we can.
We are available for you.
Great, so why don't we just board members and look at that, and we can submit any questions or comments you have to Dr. Garcia?
You bet.
Great, okay, moving on. Thank you, we appreciate that. Long night tonight. Curriculum and instruction. Item thirteen one, approval of US Department of Education Title VII Indian Education Formula Grant Application for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. Ms. Pace?
The Assistant Superintendent of K twelve Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission of the Title VII Indian Education Formula Grant Application to the Department of Education Office of Indian Education.
Move approval.
Move approval, seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirteen one. Are there questions or comments of the board, by the board of Ms. Pace? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Uh, item thirteen two, approval of parents' rights to participate in student education document three R section of the two thousand sixteen seventeen parent, excuse me, and student handbook. Ms. Pace, if you would please.
Thank you. The Assistant Superintendent of K twelve Support on behalf of the Executive Director of Public Information recommends that the Board of Directors approve the parents' right to participate in students' education document.
Uh, move approval.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded to approve item thirteen two. Are there, what'd you do loose here? Uh, thirteen two, are there questions or comments of the board? Done?
I, I found my place.
Okay, I was gonna say you could grab my, all right. Uh, we're having technical trouble up here.
I want to alert you that I identified there's a portion that will need to be updated. I see that the sexual harassment policy that is contained within this is the prior policy and not the one that the board updated, so when you approve this, I would like to suggest the possibility of approving it with the amendment to include the current policy as opposed to the former policy.
Okay, I will make that, um, I'll, I'll move to amend the motion to include the current policy on sexual harassment, not the former, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Now, uh, we are now going to vote on the amended motion. Are there any questions or comments on the amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is adopted. Item thirteen three, approval to purchase the next generation FOSS science kits for elementary. Deputy Superintendent Garcia, please.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of FOSS science kits from Delta Education in the amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, funding source basic education funding.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirteen three. Are there any questions or are there any comments by members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Item thirteen four, approval to purchase the math expressions consumable activity books for K two. Deputy Superintendent, please.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of the consumable activity books for K two students in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, funding source basic education fund.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirteen four. Are there questions or comments by the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted, five oh. Item thirteen five, approval to, excuse me, purchase springboard materials for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. Deputy Superintendent Garcia.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchases, or purchase, excuse me, of springboard materials in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-six cents for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year, funding source basic education funds.
Motion to adopt?
Submit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt uh, item thirteen five. Are there questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Thirteen six, approval of Head Start FY seventeen continuation grant ten CH uh, zero one nine four. Deputy Garcia?
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Head Start continuation grant for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year in the amount of five million two hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars, funding source Head Start.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item, item number thirteen six. Any questions or comments of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted, five oh. Moving on, item fourteen business manager, business, pardon me, matters. Fourteen one, approval of inter-local agreement with Education Service District one twelve for E-rate consulting services. Dr. Garcia, if you would, please.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services recommends the Board approve the inter-local agreement between the Tacoma School District and the ESD one twelve of Vancouver, Washington, funding source general fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded. Any questions or comments of, by the board of the Deputy Superintendent? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Item fourteen two, approval of request for proposal with Children's Hospital to provide athletic training services. Uh, Mrs. Pace?
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent of K twelve Support on behalf of the Director of Student Life recommends that the Board of Directors approve the request for proposal between Children's Hospital and Tacoma Public Schools, funding source student life.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments by the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, didn't see you.
Verifying question, I don't know who to direct it to.
Tony, I think, Ms. Pace.
In the description, it says that Lincoln and Wilson, I think Lincoln, yeah, we currently have ATCs already. Is there any expectation of collaboration between the two sets of?
Sam, can you?
Mr. Sam Reed will address that question.
You can.
Thank you, Sam.
I didn't realize you were back there, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Anxiously waiting for this opportunity. Um, no, as it, it explains, the initial beginning of the relationship will be with Stadium, Mountahoma, and FOSS. Um, the reason for that is there are currently in-house certified athletic trainers at both Lincoln and Wilson, um, so they'll continue in those roles. Um, if at time they seek employment elsewhere, elsewhere, the contract with Seattle Children's will pick up those two schools as well to provide the same level of service for those schools and those student athletes.
I guess my overall question is, I don't know how athletic trainers do their work, but if three of them are funded by the same, or, or a part of the same organization, I imagine that their way is similar, but maybe I'm wrong. So, I was just wondering if there's any expectation that um, our existing staff are working at some level in partnership or collaboration with the staff who are coming into the other three schools?
So, all of the people filling the roles will be licensed and certified athletic trainers. The entire district, including those two, will fall under medical direction of Seattle Children's moving forward. Um, and there will be a collaborative approach when it comes to record-keeping and everything like that, so that if students move from uh, building to building, there'll be the same level of support and medical history that follows them in regards to their athletic and education participation.
Thanks, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Sam. I, I personally am glad to see this, that this fit, certainly fits under our strategic plan goal of safety, so that we now have really trained, trained staff on board at all of our, they'll be at all of our athletic events, I assume.
Correct.
Great, thank you very much.
And this has been recognized, the district's been recognized for pursuing this option as a best practice in risk management, as a potential way to ensure and improve student safety, uh, and we'll be only one of, uh, two school districts in the entire state who have contracted with Seattle Children's, who's, who's of course renowned for both their athletic training program and their concussion clinic, so it's a great partnership.
Great, thank you. All right, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion's carried five oh. Okay, fourteen three, approval of second addendum and contract extension with uh, Dectronics Inc. for video display school board, art school board, scoreboard at Mountahoma. Um, Mrs. Pace?
Thank you. The Assistant Superintendent of K twelve Support on behalf of the Director of Student Life recommends that the Board of Directors approve the second addendum between Tacoma Public Schools and Dectronics Inc. for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item fourteen three. Are there any questions or comments? Director, please.
I had a clarifying question. It said no fiscal implication, however, it's a fifty percent revenue, net revenue share.
Right, so.
Well, Sam, sir, if you want.
Mr. Reed will address again.
Mr. Reed?
I like the way you just appear, thank you.
He's got your back.
Continuation of the original agreement, and so um, Dectronics actually serves as the seller of the advertising therefor, um, and so we absorb no cost in them doing their work. We do receive the fifty percent of the profits for it. Um, the other costs go toward the cost of the scoreboard and any, any potential future scoreboard additions that we would make as well.
What can we anticipate would be our fifty percent of the net revenue?
It's been as, as high as uh, forty-five or fifty thousand dollars in a year and as low as sixteen or eighteen in a year.
Okay, and then how does that get distributed?
It is absorbed into our student life, Department of Student Life operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Reed? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Uh, now, item fourteen four, approval of contract for elevator maintenance and inspection testing. Um, Mr. Story, is that you tonight?
Yes, it is. Uh, the Director of Maintenance Operations on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors authorize a superintendent to negotiate and award a three-year contract for Elto- Eltech Systems LLC with an option for an additional two years upon renewal for maintenance and inspection services to district elevators.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Are, are there any questions or comments for?
I had a question, 'cause I thought we did something with this a couple of months ago, two or three months ago, that we did some, have a contract with elevators?
We did have an existing contract with Thetson Crypt, and we, uh, we went out for an RFP for new services for elevators, and we awarded it to, to Eltech.
Okay, hopefully, they'll, they'll be able to do a better job in this building from what I know has happened in elevators recently. Okay, any, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Uh, item fourteen five, approval of contract for Brown Point School pre-construction services. Mr. Swatzky?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, the Director of Planning and Construction on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors authorize a superintendent or designee to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Skanska USA Building Inc. for the replacement of Brown's Point Elementary School and to authorize funding for pre-construction services not to exceed the amount of approximately three hundred thousand dollars.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item fourteen five. Are there any questions or comments for, by the board for Mr. Swatzky? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Um, item fourteen six, approval of major capital project bid acceptance for the Environmental Learning Center Sammy. Mr. Swatzky?
The Director of Planning and Construction on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors accept the bid for the construction of the new Environmental Learning Center Sammy from forma construction in the amount of twelve million three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, not including sales tax.
I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments of the board for Mr. Swatzky? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries five oh. Fourteen point seven, item fourteen point seven, approval of ground lease with Metro Parks of Tacoma for the Environmental Learning Center at Point Defiant Zoo and Aquarium. Mr. Swatzky?
The Director of Planning and Construction on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors authorize a superintendent or designee to enter into the ground lease by and between Tacoma School District and the Metropolitan Park District of Tacoma for the Environmental Learning Center at Point Defiant Zoo and Aquarium.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Ben moved and seconded to approve item fourteen seven. I believe Deputy Superintendent wanted to make some comments.
Yeah, just real quickly, this has been a, a long time in the works, and we're very excited. There's, it's really a, going to be a two-pronged approach for you folks, because as you read through the, the lease, uh, the East Side Center and the Fergus Creek Campus have implications, and so uh, if you choose to adopt this, uh, this, this lease right here, um, in the future months, I guess months since this is the last board meeting of June and, and potentially in July or later, we would be coming back with you, to you, uh, with the second part of the linkage that would address the land for the East Side Center. And so, the, both councils on both sides have drafted the lease with the vision um, so that money wouldn't have to be exchanged, that equals, uh, equal value has to be established. And so, the question would be is, so what is the equal value? Uh, if you choose to approve this uh, tonight, uh, then that's, would set the value that we would then be looking at for the East Side Center community property. Um, so it's established, but we, if you choose to adopt it, that value then would set precedent for what would be exchanged on the East Side property.
The reason why, I might comment, Director, Ashka and I both have sat in on those discussions. They're calling it an environmental learning center, it's that in the original underlying lease, that the city of Tacoma gives to Metro Parks, which is a hundred-year lease. Many people don't realize that Point Defiance Park is owned by the city of Tacoma. Uh, it says it can't be a school there. Why, I don't know, but it goes way back, so what we're calling is an environmental learning center rather than a school, but it still will be the Science and Math Institute. So, when you see that uh, environmental learning center uh, comment in there, that, that's why it's in there. It's also in there in the fact that maybe twenty-five or thirty years from now, someone may decide, or twenty years from now, when we're not here, some of us may be, but I'm, I'm sure I won't be, that um, may decide that that's something else other than the Science Math Institute, that'll be an environmental learning center, perhaps reconfigured. So, that gives us flexibility within the lease to do what we would like to do with that property during the time in which we have it under lease. Director, Ashka?
Actually, I have a question for Deputy Superintendent Garcia. You said that this will set the value, and I don't see a number here, so please clarify.
Right, so, what I mean by value is, is we can't um, give land to anyone, right? It'd be a gift of public funds, and so this allows us to set, um, they, I believe the technical term is they use the use of exhibits?
We have reciprocal, we have exhibits associated with reciprocal leases for each property that have commensurate value that's been established by both organizations and appraisals. So, to ensure that the lease that the district will benefit from it, Sammy, for the Sammy uh, Educational Center will be of commensurate value to the lease that will be provided for the East Side Community Center. And so, the exhibits identify the specific properties at issue and the manner in which reciprocity was determined.
So, um, in language I can understand more clearly, you've found values that make comparative, this comparison possible?
Yes.
Um, yeah, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you for saying it much more clearly than I.
The non-lawyer answer is yes.
Yes.
Equitable evaluations were done.
We have equitable evaluation now between the properties. This one, we have to get done in a hurry, because we won't get, quite frankly, building permits issued by the city of Tacoma, who's the original landlord and so on, unless we have signed, we're sort of like the sub-tenant, you know, so unless we get this done, and we wanna get moving rapidly, so.
And this project's ready?
Yes, and it's ready to go, shovel ready.
I just have to make one more comment. Um, this whole operation of being able to collaborate with Metro Parks and there is city involvement and THA and others in uh, not just the Sammy, but this land swap um, and the community center is something that's really phenomenal, and I'm gonna say it every time this comes up. Um, way before I ever ran for the board, I thought, you know, every tax, tax dollar should be leveraged to the best outcome of everybody, regardless of who owns it municipally, and this is a perfect example of really teams recreating things that they needed to, to make sure that this could happen, so huge accolades to all agencies involved, and I, obviously, am gonna support this. accolades to all agencies involved, and I obviously am going to support this.
Great.
One last clarifying point, this is, for those that are watching at home, the intent of the Environmental Learning Center is not to be the sole place inside the park where Sammy's students learn, and so that's another reason, in addition to what President Biel said of why it's not called Sammy, is because Sammy's students learn in several different settings throughout the park, and that's very important to us as well as to them, that we maintain that relationship.
Yes.
It says that Sammy is an entity and not a place.
Thank you.
Correct, yes.
I believe Director Cobb has it.
Just to the point that you're making right now, too, it's, the intent is that it's based not just for our students to learn, too, but for others to learn.
Exactly.
And not just high school students.
Yes.
And I think the design of that building indicates that the community, there'll be a daycare, or maybe a preschool opportunity for early learning, and so it's going to be an awesome place for, and a great addition to Point Defiance and for our city, and actually this is a process that has been used but not for a long time, the center at Norpoint over in northeast Tacoma went through this same process, and I think my name is on one of those leases that goes back, where the city and the school district and the parks, what?
No way, your name?
Yeah, my name, I know, we ran the dinosaurs off of there, too. Anyway, this is a great opportunity for our students and for our community. So, any more further comments? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Other business, I think we're getting towards the end here. Fifteen one, approval of the Superintendent's contract, the President of the Board of Directors recommends ratification of the attached contract with Superintendent Carla J. Santorno to reflect a three-year period of employment commencing on July one, 2016, and expiring on June thirtieth, 2019. I will move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of the Superintendent's contract, are there questions or comments? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Somehow I knew you were going to do that.
Sure you knew I was.
Director Heinz?
Aye.
Director Cobb?
Aye.
Director Winskill?
Aye.
Director Oshka?
Aye.
Director Biel?
Aye, by a five oh vote, the Board adopts the Superintendent's contract for, to commence on July one, 2016, and not expiring until June thirtieth, 2019.
If I could take the liberty of channeling the Superintendent for a moment, I would anticipate that she would say something along the lines of how tremendously proud she is to serve in this community and to serve with her team, to have community partners that are truly committed to focusing on students, and although those conversations may not always be easy, the conversation is the relationship and the relationship is the conversation, and that she would remind us that she will not rest and will not allow others to rest, she would remind us that we are not finished with our work, although we have tremendous amount to be proud of, that we do still have achievement gaps, and that we work, and we will continue to work to address those gaps, and that she would want to thank each of you for your leadership. Some of the public comments that were made is, school reform is not done overnight, and that is truly, it is truly a team effort from Board leadership down to everyone, including those that are working inside the schools, those that are working with our kids after schools, and our families that are working at home, and so she would finally say, thank you for believing in her and thank you for this opportunity, and then I'll stop channeling and go back to being me.
Before you get yourself in trouble.
That's right.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and I know that we are blessed in this school district to have not only Superintendent Santorno's expertise, but also yours. Report to the Board.
No report to the Board tonight.
Great. Board comments and reports, do you want to start?
Nothing this evening.
Great.
Just have one comment, and it's related back to Metro Parks and partnerships, so a few months back, we got a preview of the collaboration that the district was engaged in with Metro Parks and the Boys and Girls Clubs to bring greater access to athletics to our elementary schools, so we got home a flyer advertising what the different program options were going to be at the different schools, who was going to be the provider in a different place, and I just want to thank the staff for continuing to work, to partner with our other providers, and to just really create access for students to opportunities that they would not have otherwise if we didn't have forward-thinking people here doing that good work, because just to see that all kids, and all of our elementary schools will have access to some program that gets them moving early is just a good thing to see, so just want to say thank you to staff who are working on those partnerships because it just matters, so thanks.
Thank you, great. Director Winskill?
No, no report today.
Director Oshka?
Two quick comments, one is, thank you Director Cobb for reminding me of the Boys and Girls Club that, which I unintentionally did not mention when we were talking about the partnership for the East Side Community Center, they're an important and powerful partner, and we're grateful for their help. The other thing is simply that we just finished graduation season, and I think that this is our first board meeting, I think that all of us saw hundreds upon hundreds of graduates cross the stages, one of them was my son, I'm really delighted by that, but it's always the best part of our jobs, there's lots of great things about being a school board director in the city of Tacoma, but being a part of granting those diplomas and seeing kids, those that had it easy and those that struggled really hard, making it on the same day and going off to the next phase of their life, knowing that we're still here to support them when they need us, it was just awesome, and I had to say that, so, that's it.
Thank you, basically what I was going to say, this year I got to do a few more than I had intended, but anyway, we're glad Director Cobb is back healthy and Director Heinz got off earthquake duty, so, but I like what you said, Director Oshka, it was enjoyable for me because having taught a number of those kids that I get to see come across that stage, got a few tears a couple times, when one of mine won a scholarship from SOTA and so on, so I felt this year's class was just, as I looked out on these kids, Stadium Lincoln, Wilson, Sammy graduations, that it was, seems like it was an exceptional group of kids this year, by looking at the awards that were given across the district, in the high school, the number of kids high going to Ivy League schools and not just from the usual schools that we think of, our two National Merit Scholar winners, and I know in the paper, when I saw that, they were the only two National Merit Scholars in Pierce County, and that goes for the private schools and the other public schools, so they, and that's a reflection of the Superintendent's work and all of our principals' work and our graduate Tacoma, because quite frankly, I was worried about two or three of my kids who wound up getting scholarships and graduating when they came out of the fifth grade, whether they're going to walk across and get that diploma, so from my standpoint, you know, it's just moving and it just, but it also means, in the words of Robert Frost, we still have miles and miles to go before we sleep, and I think, as all of us know, it will be a never-ending journey as times change, and I think one of the things that I've learned sitting up here, and I think you have too, is that flexibility is going to be the key to how we solve these problems, because our population will change, it will evolve, and the thing that we need to do is to set in motion, as we sit here for the next year or two years or three or however long we're here, is to make sure that our work is sustainable, and I'm going to commit myself to doing that in the next year, and I think we all are to that, so that when we walk away, it won't go sideways, it'll continue on with the framework so that we can truly keep on serving our kids every day. Alright, announcement of future board meetings, on Thursday, July fourteenth, regular board meeting here, sixth floor, fourth floor auditorium, Thursday, August twenty-fifth, 2016, regular meeting here, six P.M. on, at the fourth floor auditorium. Chair would move for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and hearing none, no opposition, we stand adjourned, thank you Board members for an outstanding meeting.
Who has a line, Wes?
Oh, Lord, have mercy.
Thank you all, thank you for another day here, and we'll see you the next one.